Please be seated. The sooner we start, the more likely we'll end in one evening and not two. Quorum being present, I call our 2018 Annual Town Meeting to order. Thirteen years ago, I introduced our voluntary pledge of allegiance. It is our tradition now. Citizens recite the pledge. This falls squarely with the moderator's right to regulate the proceedings. This is in the moderator's discretion, but it is ingrained now as part of our tradition. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and join us if you wish. Mr. Carl Keener, please lead us.
... flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you, Carl Keener. Good evening, fellow citizens and voters of Southampton. Welcome to our 2018 Annual Town Meeting. I'm Robert Floyd, your town moderator. Thank you for your continued support. It's an honor to be elected, to be your town moderator, to serve you is a privilege. Your positive feedback encourages and is most valued by me. For full transparency and disclosure, I also serve you by being Southampton Cemetery Commissioner, Cemetery Superintendent of our three cemeteries, and on the Board of Directors for East Hampton Media. Our town meeting is a business, meeting of Southampton, our legislative session called pursuant to a warrant, the official record of what will be discussed and the only topics on which our town meeting tonight may actually take action. I will read the warrant to either of the constables of Town of Southampton and said, "County, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the precincts of the Town of Southampton, County of Hampshire, qualified to vote in elections and town affairs, to meet in the cafeteria at Gymnasium William E. Norris School, 34 Palmeroy Road, Meadow Road, Southampton, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, May 1st, 2018, at 7:00." Witness to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the Town of Southampton by posting a tested copy at the Southampton Town Hall. Five or more places designated for the posting of such notices, seven days before holding such meeting. Constable Michael Goyette, posted April 20th, 2018. And also posted in Trading Post, Pure Food, Big Y, Southampton Liquors, County Liquors, Stop &amp; Save, and Edwards Library. May we have a moment of silence now in keeping with Southampton's tradition for those who have moved on ahead since we have last met? Thank you. Tonight, our annual town meeting is being recorded as well as sent out live on public cable access channel 191. Thank you, Ryan Arnold and East Hampton Media. I publicly thank Carl Keener for his third successful year of Southampton's Deputy Moderator. Without objection, Carl Keener will be permitted to continue as Deputy Moderator for one more year. Congratulations, it's unanimous. Will our elected town clerk, Janine Domina, administer the oath of office, please? Thank you. There are plenty of seats up in front. We have a lot of new faces tonight. I will review my standard comments, and I've added some to help those new here to follow along and perhaps participate in the first meeting here. To pay a tribute to former town moderator Harrison Gregg, I love the idea of participatory democracy, the right to speak one's mind, the right to petition one's government for redress or grievances, or simply to bring forward a good idea that might benefit the community as a whole. I love the reality of everyone in town, or at least those who care to do so, coming together to talk things out and share responsibility for the actions they will be taking in their name. The executive branch of Southampton creates articles. The executive branch of our town's government, elected select board, elected finance committee, elected treasurer, collector, appointed accountant, elected clerk, and appointed administrator have worked hard on the articles for this annual town meeting. Their work is done. Although these members sit up front by our tradition, they individually do not have more of a vote tonight than any of you in our annual town meeting. Existence of our elected finance committee members as an advisory group does not relieve the rest of you voters from thinking and asking questions for yourselves. The warrant. The articles enter a warrant that is posted in at least five locations and warns the people of a legislative meeting. You have heeded the warning. I continue to host a televised annual town moderator, annual town meeting information session, a preview, live on our town's public access station for our meeting tonight. Open meeting law does not apply to the position of moderator, yet I do post a notice of the information session. The info session is also a forum for listening more information about vague articles. The script for the session contains the motions for the articles which will be made at tonight's annual town meeting. It works well, and investment of an hour plus makes our annual town meeting smoother from your perspective. All proponents of articles are invited to attend, but we discuss only procedural issues and not demerits or lack thereof. We take up the articles in the order they appear in the warrant and clarify which source of funds and the proposed amounts. As moderator, it puts me on notice as to where to expect debate and amendments. Here we are at our annual town meeting. Handouts. The moderator is handout content neutral. Handouts we allow are considered background material and must have some relevance to annual town meeting. The moderator announces noon of the day before town meeting, unless a holiday, where the deadline for town meeting handouts ought to be delivered to town clerk's office, even anonymously as supported by the Attorney General in Boston. I maintain that ignorance of the rule is no excuse, and I don't make exceptions unless in rare instances. Last year was a rare instance. No literature is to be handed out in the town meeting room, nor in the hallways. Outside, okay, in a way that doesn't block the doorway. Records are retained for official town meeting business, critical to Department of Revenue, Bond, Council, and Attorney General. Moderator's rules, not town council's legal opinion, apply within the meeting room and while our annual town meeting is in progress. Your moderator permits commercial TV cameras if and only if they agree to remain in the back of the room, on the other side of the line on the floor, or outside the building, not in the aisles, or inside the doors. Quorum. The essence, the necessary ingredients of our town meeting only require the town clerk, town moderator, the warrant, and in Southampton, a quorum of 25 people in accordance with our town bylaw. Some towns have zero for a quorum, some have more than 25. Duties of a moderator. My role as your town moderator is to facilitate, provide an open process that voters trust, and administer rules and guidelines in an even-handed manner, not to assure any particular outcome. I am here to ensure that those who wish to address this meeting have the opportunity and to ensure the integrity of a meeting stays as intact as possible. Both sides' need will be heard on each article. Moderator's authority over process, not outcome. A moderator leads the outcome to the fully informed voters. Procedures are used to accomplish things instead of manipulating the meeting's proceedings. I hope every dedicated voter who gave his or her confidence to put me in office as I served the town, so if you're inexperienced here, owed you back, allow me to walk you through the process tonight when you're on the microphone. Duties of voters, your responsibility. Be the legislative branch of our town government for tonight's articles. You are the legislative body by checking in and getting a card. Tonight, you exercise your freedom of speech. You all have one single vote, yes or no, for each article. Speaking and participating at a town meeting is a right, but like all rights, it should not be abused nor denied. Ground rules, courtesies, guidelines. Important to set ground rules early, then stick with them. Town meeting is a legislature subject to its own rules within the Commonwealth laws. It needs rules, one of my duties as your moderator. Why? Simple efficiency is important, so the business of the meetings can be accomplished more accurately, with fewer errors and less waste of time. More importantly, the protection of the rights of individuals against illegal encroachment, unintentional or otherwise. Southampton's town meetings are conducted in accordance with Mass. Journal laws, town bylaws, traditional customs and practices we have followed for many years with guidance by the principles and rules of conduct. In town meeting time, not Robert's Rules of Order. It's a handbook of parliamentary law. Organic process as our customs, traditions, practices evolve. Town meeting works if you want it to work, not for you alone, but for the whole community. Tonight, we proceed with what we have since 1773, when town meeting named Southampton. Motions are read out loud by the select board. Community preservation committee articles are read by our elected committee preservation commission chair. Citizen petitions articles are read out loud by their authors. When there is no reading of a motion heard historically, any voter may rise to the occasion and read a motion. Once a motion is read, I have asked and received a second. I invite a pro and then a con, who will speak for the motion, who will speak against. Rights to speak, these rules of the quorum are unique to town meeting. All discussions must be relevant to a motion under an article in a warrant and must be within the scope of each article before us, demerits or lack thereof of a motion. I always, always allow a speaker to speak. It's when after a comment is ruled out of order, out of scope, or hearsay, the speaker continues to debate the moderator, that's when the speaker is directed to sit down. I don't use a gavel, which certainly may drive the point more dramatically. I do not want drama. I will not allow a voter to take the meeting hostage. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. I will repeat that. Please allow everyone an opportunity to be heard before you request to be heard a second time on an article. Remarks concise to the point. I will allow anyone who previously spoke to address the meeting a second time with a new point or rebuttal, no repetition. Listen courteously and vote exactly as you think. Unlike many so-called public comment sessions at a town meeting, when the discussion is over, we all express our opinion in a way that generally counts by voting. So no need to express opinions with applause on various positions as we go along tonight. Before you vote yes or no, you individually are free to question, to amend, or to table, kill a motion, that is to legislate, all in a civilized manner. No comments of a personal nature, no hearsay, no naming of names are to be made. There is never an occasion for a speaker to address another in the second person, you. This will not be permitted. Cross-examinations are out of order. Rude behavior, especially shouting, bullying, lecturing, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. Anyone unwilling to comply with these rules will be removed after their third warning. So let this be our first warning. Ready to contribute something new? Please approach the microphone up front and stand in line to be recognized and turned by the moderator. First come, first heard. I will only recognize speakers standing at the microphone unless there's a point of order. And if somebody has a point of order, you simply stand in your position, stand up, and scream out, "Point of order." I'll hear you, will take it from there. Address the moderator. State your name and address clearly. Please direct your opinions, questions, answers, and address all remarks to me, your town moderator. And do not speak directly to other voters. This is meant to prevent lecturing, bullying, intimidation, and cross-examinations. No salesmanship, no theatrics, no body language. Only content, please. Thank you. The conduct of the town meeting is the moderator's responsibility, as authorized by Mass. Journal Law, Chapter 37, Section 15 and Section 17. The art of listening applies here now. Discussion continues until there are no more comments to be made, or until two-thirds of the meeting vote to end the discussion and then vote on the article. Two-thirds is a most high threshold, allowing many of you to speak on each issue. A motion to move the question is a procedural motion which will be taken up as any other motion made from the floor. For those of you who are new to town meeting tonight, a motion to move the question is a request to end all debate and to move directly to a vote on the article. To move the question, a person must be recognized by the moderator at a microphone, and a motion to move the question must then be immediately mentioned. You cannot take the microphone, recite your opinion on an article, and then try to shut off debate by moving the question at the conclusion of your comments. Please also understand that the moderator reserves the right, and I do this to rule that a motion to move the question is out of order. If I believe that the motion is unfairly or prematurely limiting the voter's right to hear answers to questions or to better understand an article. Unless it is unanimous or very close to majority, I will use tellers for count for the two-thirds. If I don't hear a clear two-thirds on the voice vote, I typically care that, "Do we not have a two-thirds?" And debate on the main issue continues. If I hear two-thirds yet somebody in the meeting doubts it, then we use tellers for a card count. If anybody doubts my call on a vote, you stand up and you express your concern, six others who join you, and then we will divide the question, we will count the votes. When the point is reached that no member is seeking recognition, I may call for a vote. If the debate is cut off by a positive vote on the motion for the previous question, I will immediately call for a vote on the motion that was being considered. If a two-thirds vote on the motion for the previous question is not attained, debate resumes. Presenters. To quote moderator Jim Pistrang, "Town meeting requires work from all participants, especially on the part of the presenters of the articles." A poorly constructed and poorly presented article is far more likely to fail at town meeting. To be successful, presenters must understand and be able to clearly communicate the details, reasons, and implications of their proposals. Anyone unsatisfied with lack of information for an article may make a motion to adjourn the meeting to a time certain for the presenter to obtain the necessary information. That's why we ask everyone that comes to a meeting to be prepared. Answers to your questions. Those seated up front may remain seated and use their tables, microphone, to answer your questions. Limits. Plan tonight is for you to speak no more than five minutes at a time. Experience demonstrates well, our minds are rarely changed after the first five minutes of a speech, and no more than two times on any article except to correct an error, answer a question. Our pre-appointed counters, when needed, will count a section as a pair, then compare counts. When they do not agree, count resumes for a complete and accurate count to be announced outlawed, out loud, so all will hear. They count from front to back. Tonight's meeting will either be adjourned to a time certain or be dissolved. Our annual town meeting goes at 10:00 and may continue with your voting to continue. I have reserved the next three evenings in my calendar in case. Move the order of articles. Is there a clearly stated and compelling, if there is a clearly stated and compelling reason to move an article to an earlier position for consideration, I will ask for an objection. If there is objection voiced, we then await a motion and see if it secures the vote required. Any reason to move the order of any articles? Seeing none, I will continue. Outside speakers, we're not vetting you in tonight, we'll skip over that, and we're almost done for this. Simply because someone states something, it simply does not make it true. A majority leaning towards approving or denying does not make it right by itself. Listen courteously, vote exactly as you think right. Thank you all for your patience or respecting everyone tonight. These guidelines will assist us in a more efficient meeting. May I hear the motion for Article 1, please?
Mr. Moderator, I first would like to explain that Mr. James LeBree Selectman could not make this meeting because of emergency surgery yesterday. He is now housebound. My understanding is he's doing okay. Article 1, motion. Moved at the town vote to hear presentations of the Richard C. Allen Educational Awards, sponsored by the Highway Department and Transfer Station.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who will speak on this? And I'll ask if anybody wants to speak in opposition. We do this for every article, I'm not expecting any, so who will speak on this?
Randall Camp, Highway Superintendent. Mr. Moderator, it's my pleasure to announce this year's recipients of the Richard C. Allen Memorial Scholarship Award. Mr. Allen served Southampton for over 20 years on numerous boards and committees. Prior to his time in our town, Mr. Allen served 18 years as a selectman in Brimfield, Massachusetts. In addition, Mr. Allen was employed as a police chief, a fire chief, mounting to over 38 years of public service. Mr. Allen's service to his community sets an example for others to emulate. It is in his honor that this award is named. The award is made possible through donations of nickel-returnable cans and bottles from the public and through the efforts of the Southampton Highway Department and Transfer Station. This year, we had six recipients, and I'd like to call all of their names, have them come all at once, just to, in the interest of time. David Helms, William LaFosse, Molly Loud, Charlotte Reynolds, Emma Taylor, and Lydia Touche. Mr. Moderator, if I may, while I have the microphone, I'd like to acknowledge all the volunteers who serve on the various boards, commissions, and committees who helped keep our town running. Thank you.
Thank you. I hear a motion for Article 2, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to hear presentations of state certificates.
Second. All in favor? Aye? Three. Formality. Janine Domina.
I'm Janine Domina, town clerk. Okay, we're giving out Senate citations to four individuals who are either retiring or moving out of town. In recognition of all the time and talent that they have given to the town, we'd like to present them with these certificates as a small token of our appreciation. Hank and Terry Barton. Thank you. And Velda Goldberg and Jackie Sears. Thank you.
Thank you. Hear a motion for Article 3, please. This is a citizen's petition.
Jim Palermo, 68 Glendale Road, Southampton. Mr. Moderator, I hereby make the affirmative motion as the sponsor of Articles...
We agreed that you would get right into the motion. We agreed on the email exchange, so I want to hear the motion so that we can vote on it.
Okay. The motion is that the... That the meeting adopt a proposed amendment to the Town of Southampton general bylaws, Article 1, by adding Section 9, which shall read as follows. "The formal rules of evidence, including those relating to hearsay evidence that apply at formal proceedings such as a court trial, shall not be applied to town meetings in asmuch as their complexity makes it difficult, if not impossible, to apply consistently. Accordingly, duly-recognized speakers, whose statements comport with requirements for decorum, shall not be prevented from speaking by the moderator when the speakers are acting in good faith, with the reasonable belief that their statements are true and that their statements are material and pertinent to matters legitimately before the town meeting."
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I being town moderator, this regarding how the meeting is being processed, I will step down for this article, and Deputy Town Moderator Carl Keener will take over the microphone. Okay, the article has been read, and did we get a second? We did. Would someone like to address this article?
Mr. Moderator, people have asked me why I care so much about whether a speaker can be prevented from speaking at a town meeting because what he or she says has been declared to be hearsay. What does that even mean? Well, I believe it is a very important issue. The town meeting is a wonderful example of democracy at work. We, the voters, are the legislative branch of government. We decide the laws that govern our town by passing bylaws. We have the right to stand before our fellow voters to speak our minds, as long as what we are saying is relevant to the issue at hand, free of approbrium, and comports with the rules of procedure that have been adopted. The Handbook of Town Meetings states that the rules of procedure must be applied uniformly and not subject to the caprice of the moderator. And I stress, when I mention moderator, I don't mean any particular moderator. I'm quoting from the book, okay? And the handbook states that it is unreasonable to expect town meetings to adhere to the complexities of procedure that may be appropriate at more sophisticated assemblies. Well, that brings us to the rule regarding hearsay. This is one section in the very complex Rules of Evidence, which according to the federal Rules of Evidence govern the proceedings in court. They do not apply to legislative branches, such as the State and Federal Houses of Representatives, or Senate, or town meetings. I suggest that moderator's authority to prevent persons from speaking is very limited, as this is the people's meeting. But obviously, the role of the moderator is essential to preside and regulate the proceedings in accordance with Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Fifteen and Seventeen of the General Laws. However, according to the handbook, such rules must ensure uniformity in the proceedings, which are not subject to the caprice of the moderator. And while there is diversity among the various towns, the rules under which a given town meeting is conducted must be applied consistently. Further rules must be applied impartially and consistently, so says the guide. The Rules of Evidence, including the section on hearsay, which again, apply to courts, are much too complex to be applied to a town meeting. For example, when speaking in support to a motion to make the collector's position appointed several meetings ago, the speaker's reference to newspaper coverage regarding the related issue in a neighboring city was ruled as hearsay. Yet, at the special town meeting at which there was a motion to make a change to the zoning of a piece of property, two members of the select board spoke on behalf of the landowner who was not able to attend the meeting in person. The select board members made statements about the landowner's intention, and how the property would be used, and about the products to be sold at the retail shop they intended to operate. Well, I believe it was fully appropriate, in fact commendable, for the select board members to have done that at a town meeting. In a court of law, those representations would have been hearsay. So, a voter is at home, thinking about what they want to say at a town meeting to support or oppose a motion. How can the voter know whether what they want to say will be allowed or be excluded on the ground that constitutes hearsay? The answer is, there's no way to know, because the town's bylaws do not address the issue. The only reference I could find in Robert's Rules of Order regarding hearsay relate to hearings, disciplinary hearings held against members of a private fraternal organization, and the rules specifically stated that hearsay should be permitted. So, what we're being asked to, what we are being asked to leave in the conduct of the moderator is to decide what he deems to constitute hearsay, and thus, the limits on citizens can say at a town meeting. In other words, this is subject to what the rules refer to as caprice of the moderator in applying it sometimes, but not regularly or consistently. I could give additional examples of the hearsay rules' inconsistent application, but the bottom line is that the Rules of Evidence were never intended for anything other than a court proceeding, and no application, they have no application at town meetings, and have the potential to violate our constitutional right of free speech.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to us?
Yes, I'd like to speak in opposition, Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street, Southampton. Mr. Moderator, no speaker is denied to speak at a town meeting. What does happen is when a speaker will quote a newspaper article where no one has copies of that article. So, the interpretation of the article, the memory of the article, taking something out of context of the article can easily sway a meeting, and it's not fair. Everyone needs to have the information, everyone's invited to put handouts, even anonymously, at the town clerk's office at noon before a town meeting. I believe this motion does not benefit the community. I believe it affects only the few speakers who insist to quote other sources. It does tie the moderator's hand to maintain an open, balanced meeting that is fair to all. When select board members, police departments, fire departments speak, many times they speak when being asked a question, or they're speaking with the authority of the town. They don't have more of a right than a citizen, but they do have a responsibility as an elected or appointed official to represent their position to the town. Bullying, intimidation, abuse, there's probably no black and white ways to recognize it, but I understand what it is when I do recognize it. Same way with hearsay. So, I will vote against this. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to address this?
Mr. Moderator, I don't mean to belabor it, but at our last special town meeting, it was, the statement was made that there are studies that show that speed trailers reduce speeding. That's hearsay, yet totally appropriate, because the Rules of Hearsay do not apply at a town meeting. And again, what my concern is, that those rules must be applied consistently, and my background, for thirty-five years, I was with the National Labor Relations Board, and part of my duties were to serve as a hearing officer. As there were non-adversary proceedings, the Rules of Evidence applied loosely, but I've had extensive training in the Rules of Evidence, and I frankly, as a non-attorney, realize it is a very complex area of law that I don't fully understand. I don't think anybody does. There are all sorts of exceptions to the hearsay rule. For example, a dying exclamation. A reference to a newspaper is no different than a reference to-
I think we're getting a little far off.
Well, I mean, we- I don't mean to belabor it, I realize there's a lot of important issues to be, so I'll gladly step down.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, Robert Floyd, fifteen East Street. This is a legislative body of government that's been going on since the seventeen-seventies in Southampton. We have different rules, different procedures, different tradition than any other body of government in the executive branch, and it's our traditions that the moderator maintains and passes it down to the next moderator. So, it works. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Champiere Creviere, thirty-nine Crookledge Road, Southampton, Mass. I think this is a very important issue. People's right to speak is important. The law and the rules apply. As I understand the rules that were read, a person has a right to say something he believes, if it's hearsay or not. I don't think any practice we've had in the past should affect that, if that's what the rule is. I know that he spoke about Robert's Rules of Order when we started, and I know that this select board in this town, when I was chairman, voted to go by the Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules of Order do not prohibit hearsay. So, I don't think that the chairman has a right to prohibit hearsay, or I don't think we as a group have a right to vote to prohibit hearsay. To change the rule on Robert's Rules of Order, it would take a vote of two-thirds of the select board to set up a different set of rules and use something else. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question. I have a motion to move the question. Do I have a second? All in favor? All opposed? The article is moved. We need, we need to vote on the article. The article as specified. If anyone has any questions, we can read it again. If not- Sorry. It's not a, it's an ice cream cone, I forgot. All in favor of Article Three? Please raise, I'm sorry. Please say aye. All opposed? Article carries. May I have a motion for Article Four, please? It's a citizen's petition, so the author of the Article Four will step forward.
Good evening, Barbara Laflamme, twenty Cook Road. I move that the town vote to, A, to raise, appropriate transfer from available funds, accept gifts and grants, and/or borrow up to one million, two hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of acquiring for municipal use certain real estate located at College Highway now or formerly owned by the heirs of Frank and Lucille Wayne, consisting of fifty-one point eight nine acres, more or less, and shown on assessor's maps as parcel nineteen, map nineteen, parcel one forty-one, map nineteen, parcel one forty-four, and map twenty-four, parcel fifteen, and B, and further to authorize the town to acquire the property by gift, negotiated purchase, eminent domain, or other lawful means for purposes such as, but not limited to, locating a shared police and emergency services facility, developing a site to meet Southampton's community housing obligation, location for a future school building, a senior center, open space, conservation, passive recreation, or other municipal purpose, as the voters deem appropriate.
Motion made, who will make a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
This is quite an unusual article. It's been submitted by citizen petition. Generally, the articles on the warrant originate from various municipal boards, or committees, or the Board of Selectmen. This has come about because on April fifth, the town hosted a forum attended by approximately hundred and seventy-five people that dealt with the legalities and the issues that affect the Town of Southampton's right of first refusal when chapter land becomes available and the town's option to purchase that, that property. This is unusual in that there are two parts to this article. One part is for the voters present today to instruct our Board of Selectmen to proceed to acquire this particular fifty-one point eight nine acre parcel, and the other part of this article gives them suggestions on very, various ways that they can achieve the goal of acquiring this property on behalf of the voters of Southampton, for whatever uses they deem appropriate. The other handout is this map, which I hope you all have. I did about two hundred, but there's a lot of people here, I'm not sure everybody got one. It's map four hundred. It's on County Road, I mean, College Highway. It extends on the other side of the, of the rail trail as well. There is one other handout that I have provided, and that I acquired by pursuing the town's open meeting law. And it's a document from the executive session dated December nineteen, twenty seventeen, and it deals with the possibility that a Southampton person has stepped forward and offered to give the town this particular parcel of land. And for some reason or somehow, and I don't know how, because I'm still waiting for more minutes of executive sessions that I've asked for, the negotiations have stalled. That doesn't mean that it's still not possible, but the town should never, especially in our current situation, pass up the possibility of a gift for one point two million dollars. So, voters, you have two choices. One is to say yes and instruct your town officials to acquire this land, and the second would be to allow them to use their wisdom with the parameters outlined in this particular article on how to do it. So, a yes means that you would like your officials to acquire this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition of this?
Michael Rosenberg, one forty-four East Street, Finance Committee. The Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article. Taking on such an undertaking in light of the town's current fiscal situation is not advised. The language of the article is vague in regards to the financing and purchase, and purpose of the purchase. Also of note, we did not have any of this other information prior to viewing this, so we only voted on the language in the article, not the minutes or the map given.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, John Martin, one oh six Clerk Street. I'm not petitioning for or against, but I just want to let folks know that-
Is that a cat? A dog? I've never seen a dog before, sorry.
We have a show stealer here. What I was saying, I'm not for or against, I just want to make sure people know that this is not a recommendation not to select board pursue this. This is a mandate, once it's voted on, that we have to go after this particular land, and it says to raise or appropriate from available funds, gifts, grants, or to borrow up to one point two million dollars. So, if we end up not getting grants, this says we need to go and borrow it, and you borrow that kind of money, it goes on your tax rate. So, people should know that this is not a recommendation, this is a mandate, once it gets approved here and at the election. So, if people don't want to have a mandate, then it should be restructured in a different way, but if you vote on this, it is a mandate. Thanks.
Thank you.
James Burton, seventy-four East Street, here in Southampton. I've been a carpenter here in nine years. I didn't do any research on this, I wasn't expecting to stand up, wasn't expecting to stand up here tonight. But one thing I do see here in Southampton is we're a growing community, and I don't think we're giving the developers, and I know that's a nasty word, developers, we don't give them the opportunity to get land that's reasonable to build on. It's going to happen, people. They're out buying a perfectly good farmland because that's what's available. You take fifty acres out of the middle of downtown where everything else is there. If there were homes there, they can walk to the restaurants, they can walk to the liquor store, they can get their Dunkin' Donuts. They don't have to drive, it's right there. Everything's there, water, sewer, power, rather than building twenty homes five miles out down whatever street you want to name. you want to name. So consider that. Developers are going to find property as best they can. So, that's a, that could be a really nice settlement there, close to everything. And there's already a major highway. And I'm sure that they would donate enough spot for a public safety building.
Thank you.
Jessica McConnell, 24 High Street. As far as I know, this land has already been purchased. It is also still in Chapter 61, consequently, nothing is going to happen to it today. And I think it would be intelligent for the town to wait and see if the sale, land comes up for sale again. It seems expensive and unnecessary at this time to per, to try to purchase this piece of land, either discounting the current purchase, or try to buy it from the current owner, especially since they've already left it in Chapter 61.
Next, thank you.
April West, 54 Strong Road. I would just like to remind the residents of Southampton of our master plan and our vision. And in that vision and in that master plan, we prioritize Chapter 61 lands. And this particular parcel transferred without proper notice of intent to sell to the town. And we will see this over and over again unless we put our foot down and show that we intend to have people follow proper procedure. There are 200 parcels in this, in this town that are under Chapter 61. This is just the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Konecki, 146 Valley Road. Just so that the residents of the town know, we've already had a notice for right of first refusal on a parcel of land on Glendale Road. And that process is now starting for the town to try to figure out if, one, they can use it, and two, if they can financially afford it. The other part to this is, people need to realize the fact that we are looking at a Prop 2 and 1/2 override because we are trying to balance our budget. To take and interject this, that we need to borrow money to take and buy this parcel, if we can buy this parcel, and by the way, eminent domain means we're in litigation for a number of years. It's not just the purchase of the land, but it's also a legal responsibility of paying the attorneys to fight for us to try to move that forward, is going to make this basically a white elephant. I, myself, have over 130 acres in chapter land, have kept it in agriculture all my life and before me and my father. And we think it's a good program. But, the reality is, given this juncture in time, given the financial situation of the town, I would not recommend this article.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four, please signify by saying aye. Signify, those opposed signify by saying nay. We're going to have a count. This needs a two-thirds. So get your cards ready. The counters will come up front, and they'll work their way to the back. Keep your hands up. The yellow cards, the square ones. This one. This is for yea. All those who want this, please signify by saying aye. Raise your cards so they can be counted. And those are your counters, and those are your counters. Hold your cards up high. Keep them up. No, don't put your hand down just because you think you've been counted.
47.
26 and 47, thank you. We're done counting the ayes. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards.
70.
Seven zero?
Seven zero.
And somebody else is coming, or is that the total? Put your cards down now. Thank you.
147.
Repeat that again, please? 73 ayes, 217 nays. The motion under Article Four fails. May I hear a motion for Article Five? Oh, and by the way, just to clear something up, the moderators, my predecessors, have used town meeting time since the last century, and no executive branch, select board can select what a town meeting abides by, whether it be town meeting time or Robert's rules. May I hear a motion for Article Five, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to the provisions of general law Chapter 41, Section 1B, to change the position of elected treasurer-collector to an appointed position, to be appointed by the select board for a term of up to three years, provided, however, that such change shall not take effect until it's also approved by the voters at the 2019 annual town election.
Motion made, or I hear a second?
Second.
This article has been before historically. At an annual town meeting, May 20th, 2014, it failed. Annual town meeting, May 19th, 2015, it failed. At a special town meeting, November 29th, 2015, it failed. Who would like to speak on this motion, please?
Charlie Konecki, Chair of Select Board. This article is reoccurring because of the fact that the Department of Revenue has always encouraged the town to take and have an appointed town treasurer. It allows us the latitude to hire qualified people rather than depending on an electoral vote where we have no control as to what individuals are going to be put in that position, given the fact that this individual oversees all the finances of the town. It's felt to be more professional if the town hires and basically uses this person as an employee directly.
Thank you. Who would like to speak in opposition to this motion? Seeing none, anybody else would like to speak on this? I'd rather not have to invite everyone every time. If you feel the need to speak, which is your right, nobody takes it away, simply go up to the microphone and stand in line. Thank you.
Vicky Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. I feel that this is important for the town to have a qualified treasurer-collector. We have been blessed that we had a treasurer-collector who had plenty of experience to have that job, and our current one that's in the interim now has experience. But I, as a, personally as the accountant, need that individual to have the experience in order for me to do my job so I can give you correct financial information. So it's important that that person has those qualifications. Not that the person getting elected isn't a nice person, but we need someone who has those qualifications to hold that position.
Thank you.
John Martin, 106 Clark Street. I guess I just want to go back historically. Donna Whitley left here. She did a fantastic job. She had qualifications when she got hired. But prior to that, we had some folks in the office, and when Donna took over, I'm remembering, we were about $200,000 in back taxes that were sitting out of there. And we had some payment plans that were set up by a prior treasurer, and people were paying pennies on the dollar every month in order to pay back their taxes. Unless you live to be 300 years old, you're never going to pay them back. And once you have an agreement, you're stuck with that legally. So, we need somebody qualified that can go in there and look at these. Donna brought $200,000 plus back to the town in revenue that was sitting out there. And it's a business job. It's, you feel sorry for the person that owes the taxes, but you, everybody owes taxes, everybody needs to pay them, and we need to treat it like a business versus a family friend that you can say, pay me back $10 a month. So if we don't have somebody that knows what they're doing, we're not going to get our taxes, and we're going to be back here looking for more money. And my old story is, we're, we're right now a $17 million business, and people don't like the idea of being called a business, but it is. If you work in a factory, or you work in an office, and your treasurer leaves, you don't go out to the shop floor and say, is there anybody interested in taking this job to be treasurer? You hire the most qualified person, and that's what we're doing. And Donna Whitley, before she left, she was in favor of this as well, because she realizes that turnover every three years is not good for the person working there. They, they need to know that they're, they're secured in their job. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Seeing none will vote. We need a simple majority. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Six, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to provisions of general law Chapter 41, Section 1B, to change the position of the elected town clerk to an appointed position, to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a term up to three years, provided, and however, that such change shall not take effect unless it is also approved by the voters at the 2019 annual town election.
Motion made, or I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This article has appeared before. At an annual town meeting on May 20th, 2014, it failed. And at the special town meeting, November 29th, 2015, it failed. Who would like to address this, please?
I can see that John was here. Charlie Konecki, Chair of Select Board. Again, this is another one of those positions that is basically charged with all the data relative to our community. And we're trying to keep our professional standards up, and this is the reason we're doing the same as we did with the treasurer.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Anyone want to speak at all? Seeing none, will vote on this motion. All in favor of, say aye. Opposed, say nay. This motion under this article passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Seven, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of general law Chapter 59, Section 5, clauses 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22F. Veterans exceptions, or take any other action relative thereto.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Doric Dodds, Board of Assessors. Mr. Moderator, there may be a little procedural problem here. We are not asking the townspeople to vote to adopt clauses 22 through 22F. Those are public law. We have no opportunity to say yes or no about them. At the very least, we would have to alter the language of this article. Otherwise, we'll have to pass over.
Okay, we have a motion to pass over, which is simply to not take any action. So pass over, we don't like. Not take any action is better, because a pass over means, you know, we'll do it in another hour, half hour.
If I could revise that, then?
Yes.
I don't intend for it to be a completely take no action, but at least whatever it is to-
Take no action, and then it'll come up some other time.
That's-
All right, we have a motion to take no action. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a seconded. All in favor of passing over, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. We pass over by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Eight, please?
Request to pass over Article Eight. Take no action.
Take no action in Article Eight? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor of passing over Article Eight, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It's passes, it passes over, take no action by majority. May I hear a motion for Article Nine, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the town bylaw Article 1, Section 6, by amending the existing language as set forth in Article 9 of the warrant of the May 1st, 2018 annual town meeting.
Motion made, or I hear a second?
Second.
This regards the process of town meeting, so the moderator needs to step down, and the deputy town moderator will take over for prior agreement. Who would like to address this motion?
Janine Damina, 130 Strong Road. The town has more than doubled in the number of residents and registered voters since 1948, when the original bylaws were established, with the quorum being 25. If approved, this bylaw amendment would raise the quorum requirement for all town meetings from 25 to 50 registered voters.
Would anyone else like to address this? Seeing no one, will vote on the motion. All in favor of Article Nine, please signify by saying aye. All those against, please signify by saying nay. Passes by majority. Thank you. Think I'm up here for the rest of the night. May I hear a motion for Article 10, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town raise and appropriate $16,480,135 to fund all municipal departments and the public schools during fiscal year 2019, as shown in the town's annual operating budget for fiscal year 2019, as shown in the column labeled Fiscal Year 19, Base Budget Non-override A, or take any other action relative thereto.
Motion made, or I hear a second?
Second.
This moderator believes it's too large of an item to vote all in favor aye. And historically, I divide the question, and this is what we'll do. We'll divide the budget into groups, and we'll discuss and talk on each group. We will then vote on a particular group, and once we've voted, that's it. We'll go to the next one. We'll go to the next one. When we're all done discussing and voting on all the groups of the budget, we do not have to vote on the entire budget again. So who would like to address general government? Well, wait, give him some information at least. General Government, $591,543. Any questions? That we're going to, oh, right up to the mic. That we're going to, oh, right up to the mic.
Jessica McConnell, 24 High Street. What is PEG programming?
Who would like to explain that? I know the answer, but Vicky's on her way.
Vicky Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmory Meadow Road. Currently, we have a special revenue fund for PEG programming where dividends from the Charter Cable go into this fund so that we can pay East Hampton Media Cable for the filming of our meetings, for the use of Channel 191. And this is in the budget as a pass-through. There is a revenue account and a expenditure account so that we will be able to pay East Hampton Media for their services without having to go to a town meeting every single time that they need to be paid.
Can I answer your question? Thank you. Anyone else seeing none? We're going to vote on the general government expenditures. All in favor to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It passes unanimously. Who would like to address public safety? Public safety is $1,713,632. Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of public safety, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. It passes unanimously. Who would like to speak on education? Education is $10,720,501.
Mike Beeler, 88 High Street. Mr. Moderator, I have with me two students from Hampshire Regional High School who wish to speak to the budget item under discussion right now.
Are they voters?
They are not yet voters of the town.
We don't allow non-voters to speak. It's your meeting. All in favor of allowing the students to speak, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Please step one at a time and state your name and address.
Rebecca Beuler, 88 High Street.
Nick Eline, 6 Gene Circle.
We are both students in the junior class at Hampshire Regional High School. We would like to begin by thanking Southampton for its historic support of the town budget and within that, the budget for Hampshire Regional High School. Without you, it would not be possible for us to have the amazing opportunities and programs that we do now. This current budget is proposing level service funding, which will mean that we can continue to have access to the programs that we have had and benefited from in the past. And we want to stress to you how important it is that we continue and other students continue to have access to these opportunities in the future.
Thank you.
These programs include our arts and athletics. Our arts includes our theatrical and drama performances. And our athletics feature many state championship teams. These programs are able to establish leadership, build confidence, as well as shape character of all the students who are participating. I can easily say that I would not be standing up here today had it not been for my opportunities in the Hampshire Regional Athletic Community.
Thank you.
Finally, what I believe to be the most important part of our Hampshire Regional School community is our amazing faculty. Every single teacher is 100% devoted to making sure that every student has equal academic opportunities and is prepared to be willing and ready to take on challenges, both in high school, college, and careers afterwards. All of this is made possible by you.
Thank you.
We are positive that Hampshire Regional is supplying us with all the educational opportunities to ensure our bright and successful futures. And for that, we thank you.
We're good. Thank you very much. And, no, hold your applause. Use your, express yourselves with your voting. Thank you. And we'll see you back at other subsequent town meetings, I'm sure. Anybody else would like to speak? Seeing none, we're going to vote on education. All those in favor of this item of the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. This part of the budget, education, passes unanimously. May I hear Highway, please? Who would like to address that? For Highway, we have $792,325. Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of the Highway section of the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The Highway budget passes unanimously. Who would like to address Health and Human Services, please? Am I waiting? Okay, we'll vote. All those in favor of $112,026 for Health and Human Services, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. This section of the budget passes unanimously. Who would like to speak on Culture and Recreation? This is $155,803. Seeing none will vote. All those in favor of Culture and Recreation part of the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Who would like to address Employee Benefits? Employee Benefits are $2,156,799. And I see someone walking.
Tom Livingston, Palmory Meadow Road. Can someone explain, under the unemployment compensation, there's an increase of almost $110,000 from last year?
Okay, question? Who would answer that? Vicky? Ed Gibson, Town Administrator?
This is the non-override base budget. If this is the budget that we end up with for July 1st, there will be a number of layoffs, both through the elementary schools, the police, what have you. We are a direct-pay unemployment community. So therefore, the this, the base budget, the non-override budget, has a large increase in unemployment because that's what we would be facing for fiscal year 19.
Thank you. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, good. Cheers. Anybody else? Any questions? Seeing none, will vote. Employee Benefits, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Is that, it passes by majority. Debt Service Principal, anyone want to speak on that? $176,850. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. And the last one, Debt Service Interest. Seeing none will vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Passes unanimously. Okay, budget is approved. I hear a motion for Article 11, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a supplemental sum of money of $493,163.41 for the purposes of funding the following departments and accounts in the operating budget for the town: Elementary School Department, Police Department, Fire EMS Department, Highway Department, Public Library, Council of Aging, Parks Commission, Street Lighting, Select Board, Administration, Accounting Department, Assessors Department, Treasurer Collector Department, Legal Department, Town Clerk Department, Telephone, Town Hall Building, Board of Health, Building Department, IT Expenses, and Equipment and Emergency Management Department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, provided, however, that the vote taken hereunder shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of a Proposition 2.5, so-called override question, allowing the town to raise the additional amount appropriated hereunder outside the limits imposed by said Proposition 2.5 in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21CG.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak in favor of this, please? Anybody would like to explain this to the public?
When we started looking at the fiscal year 19 budget requests, we've had an, almost an $800,000 deficit for fiscal year 19. We took a look at that. We understood that we would need an override to provide the level of service to the residents and businesses of the town of Southampton that they are accustomed to. And we took some steps to say, this is not business as usual for fiscal year 19. How can we pare down that $800,000 deficit to a smaller number to ask for an override? On the municipal side, we did not offer any cost of living increases to our municipal employees or our, the collective bargaining agreements on the municipal side are up. So we did not, we do not plan to offer any cost of living increases in the union contracts for fiscal year 19. We added no new positions for fiscal year 19. We did not add any hours to anyone's positions. We turned around. We took a look at where we could cut, reduce hours. If this does not pass, every administrative assistant in the town would lose five hours a week. The elementary school, Nora School, would, has about $245,000 of this override. They would be cutting their staff by six and a half full-time positions. We would lose one police officer, which would reduce our patrols, possibly leading to a higher crime rate. As far as the elementary school goes, if we reduce the staff there, we're going to have larger class sizes, which are, will not be conducive to as good an elementary education as we currently have. Another large area would be $100,000 difference between the non-override and the override budget for our EMS services. This would basically eliminate the second and third shifts, which we actually just got approved. And not only would we not be able to probably supply services for the second and third shift or rely on someone else to do it, the state would probably rescind our advanced-level service for our ambulance, which would mean we'd only be allowed to offer a basic service, even though we have paramedics. That means the type of medications that the EMTs or the paramedics can provide are not the same. Incubate, they would not be able to provide incubations. So someone relying on emergency medical service would not get the same level of care. We took a look. We cut budgets as far as expenses, as far as we could to still provide services to the town, but it'll be very difficult. The Highway Department would lose almost two full-time employees, which would mean that not only how, how they fill potholes or fill potholes, but mow athletic fields, get them ready for games. And in the wintertime, the basic reaction time or the time it takes to clear our streets would actually be reduced. So if the override does not pass in the amount of $493,163, we'd actually have reductions across every department. The library would end up closing one day a week, which would be Mondays. So the level of service that would be provided would be greatly reduced from what you are currently expecting and used to.
Thank you. Question?
Matt Rowland, 16 Mountain Road. Just a few things. So to circle back on a previous gentleman's question about the unemployment rate going up on the balance budget, this directly points to this. So this budget is, this override budget is the leanest budget we could have put together. It went through meeting after meeting after meeting. There is no fat in this budget, and there is something for everyone in it. It's affecting every town department drastically. So Highway Department, Police Department, Fire Department, Education, and the Town Department as well, obviously Senior Services and Library. You're going to see drastic cuts in all of this. And if you want the evidence for that, just one line item in the budget, you can look for the unemployment line, which a gentleman previously pointed out. So if you want to have the same town that you had last year, exactly the same, this is the budget that you need to vote for. Ed did an excellent job outlining service by service, the losses that you'll experience should this not pass. This is a very real scenario. I encourage you to...
Addressing the moderator.
Become educated on it.
Sir?
And we have...
You're addressing the moderator now?
And we have pamphlets on this if you're interested. So if you'd like to become engaged, I encourage you to reach out. And we have some resources and Q and As for you.
Thank you. Next?
Patrick on 25 Pleasant Street. This is pretty much a question, probably the town accountant can answer it. Early estimates of free cash in a budget 18, should everything remain the same going on? So the estimated free cash should be held over and for fiscal year 19. Any numbers?
Question? The answer is...
Well, I said, should, should the budget remain the same? Your revenues are pretty much already in.
Address your comments to the moderator and address your answers to the moderator, please. No cross-examination.
That's a difficult question as we are still collecting revenues from, from, you know, from April, May, and June. All the expenses aren't in. It's tough to say what we may or may not have overspent or underspent for this particular year. And we still have May, which was about one of our biggest, which is one of our months of collecting taxes that we still haven't recorded on the book. So I don't know that I can gauge that at this point in time.
Thank you. Can I answer your question?
Well, obviously, there was no answer. But my concern is, right now, as we're going for the override, we may wind up with a lot of possibility of extra free cash for next year that could cover this override. That's my concern.
Thank you.
Dan Pellegrini, 76 Crookledge Road, member of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee did vote for this, but it was not an easy vote. It was not a unanimous vote. It was torn. One of the major reasons, and I am not for this, I will put that out there. One of the major reasons that I am not for this is it does not fix the problem. All right, we're going to be in this problem next year. If you just look at the contractual increases that we have in contracts, and we look at what we would get for a 2.5% increase, even with this other 2.5%, we're still in a deficit next year. So we're going to have to address this. So my point is, let's take our medicine now. Let's address it. Let's right-size this government for this town and our services for the population and do it today. And now I want to give another idea of what our population is in town. 2011, the population in town was 5,892. Today, the population is 6,022. That's an increase of 130 people in the past seven years. It doesn't jive with our increase in our spending. So all that we're hearing about the facts and the cutting, it's got to happen. It will happen, whether it's this year or next year. This 2.5 is not a long-term answer. It's an answer to get us through the next 12 months and then go deal with it. I guess the only saving grace would be Ed over there, who can maybe get us squared away in the next 12 months. But if he doesn't get us squared away in the next 12 months, we're going to face the same discussion next year. So what this override is a Band-Aid and does not fix the problem.
Thank you. Next?
Maureen Groden, Sherrell Lane. I agree that we need a resize, but we need a reset. I really feel, I've been on the Select Board for a year. I do not think that there is any gross mismanagement. I agree that it's a very, very lean budget. Our own brand-new town administrator has taken a voluntary $3,000 cut in pay if this, this override doesn't pass. And I think that we're very fortunate in this town. We have a beautiful town, and we also have really good department heads right now. We have people that oversee departments. And I personally think they're doing... We have people that oversee departments, and I personally think they're doing a very good job. I was on the school committee back when my kids were in high school. They graduated in oh-five and oh-seven. And at that time, or even before then, they were encouraging regionalization. And so we regionalized our high school, and thank you to the kids that got up here and spoke, because I'm always incredibly impressed with students. We're not getting the money from the state. They promised a hundred percent reimbursement for public transportation, for regional transportation. And they, when I was on the school committee, that was sixty percent was what they gave. They requiring computers for MCAS. They don't pay the whole bill, and then they tell the local schools and local towns that you have to pick up the difference. So this is an accumulation of constantly trying to fill in the gap. And I think we need a reset. And I'm very committed, and I hope other people are too. I'm not supporting an annual override. I'm supporting a reset.
Thank you. Next.
I guess I just want to address Vicki Morrow, Palmer Meadow Road, the free cash issue again. It's very hard to calculate at this point in time, but if you remember, back in two thousand and fourteen, the Department of Revenue came in and did a study on our budget process and how we were using free cash to balance our budget for a number of years. I wish I brought those papers with me, but it was over a million dollars. And they said, you can't do that anymore. Free cash is supposed to be used for one-time purchases, not to fund your operating expenses. And again, we haven't been doing that the past few years, and that's kind of why we've been in the predicament that we're in. And you people are the voters. You can say no-
Excuse me.
Sorry.
You're lecturing, you people. Address your comments to the moderator.
It is the town meeting vote for us to vote on every single appropriation. So if you don't believe in it, you should vote no. So if you don't think that we should use free cash-
Please refrain from using you.
If individuals don't believe in using free cash to balance the budget, then just vote no.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mary Ann Carrasco, Glendale Road, one sixteen. And it's my understanding that we are simply voting today to place this on the ballot, correct?
That is correct.
And as much as I value town meeting, and it's wonderful to see everyone here, I think this is something we should bring to the vote, to all the voters. Not everyone had an opportunity to be here tonight, so let's pass this here so that we can have the vote for everyone to participate.
Thank you. No applause. Thank you.
Jessica McConnell, twenty-four High Street, Southampton. I do agree that three hundred people should make the decision for six thousand. However, I will be straight, I'm voting no on this. I'm voting no on this. I fully understand that I'm going to lose services when I vote no on this. But I also understand that we are never going to change as long as we keep pushing it along and pushing it along and pushing along. There are options. This town has not modernized at all. We have regionalized at the high school level, but we have done nothing at the elementary level. We continue to try to support our own elementary school and do it all on our own. The towns of Chesterfield and Goshen have regionalized elementary school, and they get state funding that we do not get. West Hampton Elementary is fifteen minutes for us. I'm not saying that we should close one or the other schools, but why can't we go K through four and five through six? There are options that we need to consider. I read the report that was done on our fire department. At the time that report was done, we had already chosen to go with paramedic-level services. However, that was not the recommendation of the report. We are in the center of West Hampton, Holyoke, East Hampton, and depending on where you live in town, there are options. We need to start thinking as a whole. We can't just keep doing what we've been doing all right along. We ditched our cable at home. My husband hated it, but he adjusted. I haven't lost a single channel. I got everything I had before, and I'm using free over-the-air for some of this stuff, and I'm streaming the rest. There are ways to do the things we're doing today differently that will continue to give us what we want, but not just keep pushing along the, pushing along the stone. We need to change. And I'm sorry, I don't think people change when they don't have an option. I take my bags to the grocery store, and I watch everybody else continue to use plastic. They'll keep using plastic till they don't have a choice anymore, and I feel the same way about our budget. So if you want to put this on the ballot, do so. Everybody has a right to vote, but think about what you're doing. Stop pushing the stone.
Thank you. No applause. Thank you. Who's next?
Rob Hutcheson, seven Parsons Way. I feel like there have been- Thank you. That worked. There have been, thanks. Mr. Moderator, there have been a lot of stopgap measures in the past, including using school choice funds to make up for the lack of funding that has been done for four years. There aren't, there is no more school choice, so that is not an option. Now, the, one of the criticisms of this override is it's a Band-Aid, and yet one of the proposals is to use free cash, also a Band-Aid, not fiscally responsible. So while I agree there need to be changes, I also wholeheartedly agree with that there needs to be a reset. We have to pay to play for the services we're using. We are outspent by the majority of the local towns in per pupil spending. West Hampton has, does not have these issues. Look at the amount they're spending on their taxes compared to us. I think it was Holyoke and Hadley. I'm trying to remember the, the other towns that were less. There weren't that many. So if we're saying we value this, and this is important to us, at some point, we have to pay the piper. This gets us to a reset point, and then we can try to come up with creative solutions moving forward.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Janet Kane. Whoa.
Hi.
Hi. It's my favorite flavor.
Address.
Janet Kane, eighty-three Glendale Road. I am, when I moved here ten years ago and retired to this area, it's not just the open space, but the great quality of the schools that attracted me here. I don't have children in the school, but I know the value of my home is often based on the value that we place on our school district. I'm also the chair of the Council on Aging Board. We've grown from just over eleven hundred seniors in two thousand and ten to almost eighteen hundred seniors in two thousand and ten. This override budget provides finally enough money to pay a full-time director for a department that instead of having him funded by a state formula grant, which takes away the, from the programming. I think it's critical. It's, it, to me, yes, I agree. I've volunteered for six years in the town. I've been elected to positions in the town. I do believe we need to make changes, but I think we've been fiscally responsible. I think we also can't get further in the hole and figure out how to get out of that hole. I think we need this override this year, and I think we need to work very hard in the next twelve months collectively as boards and committees to move in the right direction.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article twelve, please? Quiet. You're welcome to stay. We have a lot to do, and it's encouraging to see a lot of passion here. So our goal is to be done by ten, but please, please be quiet if and when you're making a transition.
Robert, just to clarify that, vote, vote was to pass that article in favor?
Yes.
Okay.
Did I say it passes?
We're voting for the motion under the article. That's the only thing we're voting on.
It's going to work.
We have a point of order. Could everybody stop still? Turn around? I have a challenge to the moderator's call, which I accept. We were voting on the motion, not on putting anything on a ballot. I never said that. Somebody else may have. So I'm going to do the vote again. All those in favor on the motion for Article eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion for Article eleven passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article twelve, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote the budget of the transfer station enterprise fund as presented in Article twelve of the warrant of May first, two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting.
I need everyone to be quiet. If you're going to leave, have a good evening. Thank you for coming, but on the way out, wait until you get to the parking lot. Those are seated, please. Thank you. We have business to conduct. We have a busy night ahead of us, and I need your cooperation. Thank you for giving it to me. Mayor, second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on Article twelve. Who will speak on this? Yes, and to be fair, could you read the article? Because it shows a little bit more than the motion. The motion is truncated and refers to the article. So could you read the article and the motion for Article twelve, please? Thank you.
Article twelve, Transfer Station Enterprise Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Nineteen Budget. It's the landfill transfer station. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, basically the budget, wages thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars, operating expenses a hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, and debt services twenty-three thousand five hundred and twenty-five, giving us a total of a hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. So the motion is, I move that the town vote the budget of the transfer station enterprise fund as presented in Article twelve on the warrant of May first, two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Randall Kemp, Highway Superintendent. There are no changes in fees, days of operation, or bag fees from last year.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Seeing none, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion on Article twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Excuse me. Excuse me. When I call a vote, the vote's in process. Nobody can interrupt it. If anybody needs to speak, you don't need a special invitation. Don't raise your hand, you just go to the mic. The vote was in progress. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article twelve passes by majority. Please, if anybody has to speak, we set the microphone up, but we, I can't be looking at every single person. Please, if you need to speak, get up, get behind a mic. Mayor, a motion for Article thirteen, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve the budget of the Water Department Enterprise Fund as presented in Article thirteen of the warrant for the May first, two thousand and eighteen annual town meeting.
Could you, I'm sorry for the distraction, but you could read the article, John?
Sure. Article thirteen, Water Enterprise Fiscal Two Thousand and Nineteen Budget. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, seven hundred forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars to operate the water enterprise according to the following budget, wages two hundred and ten thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars, operating expenses a hundred and sixty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars, capital outlay a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, debt services two hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, for a total of seven hundred and forty-one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars, to be raised from water enterprise revenues and of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand sixty dollars and twenty thousand five hundred from retained earnings.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded for Article thirteen. Who would like to speak on that?
Matt Christie, Middle Road, Chairman of the Water Commission. This budget, this article represents our annual budget that is raised from the user fees.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else would like to speak? Just go right up to the mic.
Chief Ferrante, Karen Wayne. What I'd like to know, with these transfer station, it's very, with the water department here, as well as the, the highway department's control of the dump or transfer station, who decides the fees and the charges? Because I recall last year-
Is this a question under this particular article? You're talking about water now?
On this particular article.
Okay, water.
Transfer station. Transfer station.
Transfer station isn't water.
You know, who makes the decision to raise the fees and the charges?
Good question. Wrong article. We need to address the water on this. Okay, then, then compose it for the water.
Yeah, water too.
Okay. Matt? Thank you. Teamwork.
The water rates are derived and voted on and reviewed by a Board of Water Commissions. There's three members of the board, and we review that, we review the rates annually.
Okay. Thank you. That answered your question for the water. Okay, good. Thank you.
Francine Tishman, eighty-three Glendale Road. I'm just inquiring for clarification on the wages, whether or not that includes a two percent increase, or is it flat as it is for the other departments in the, in the both budgets that were proposed today?
Okay. Question? Matt?
The wage budget line does include a cost of living increase over last year.
We, we have people coming up to the mic. You're next.
At Tom Livingston, Palmer Meadow Road. Does this represent an increase in the water rate from what we currently pay? And if so, how much?
Okay. We have a question?
I believe the question was, does this represent an increase in what the current rates are?
Yes.
Currently, the rates that are in place today were set, I believe, last year. Right now, we're studying the current rates to see where we might be in fiscal year twenty.
Thank you. That answered your question?
No. I'm assuming that we're raising this revenue from the rates.
Yeah, the nod is yes.
Okay. So, so we're rating, so we're, we're voting on a budget, and we don't know if the rates are going to increase?
That's correct. When we set the budget for this year, we did not contemplate a rate increase. When we look at the budget for next year, in between now and then, we will contemplate a rate increase if needed. Right now, there is no rate increase scheduled for FY nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica McConnell, twenty-four High Street. Could the Water Board just clarify, because I heard some booing in the audience, that the Water Board generates their own revenue consequently if they choose to do a pay increase? They are generating their own funds? It is not the same as everything else?
Question, Matt?
Correct. The Water Department is funded by an enterprise fund, which is separate from the general account. And we, we do feel that our biggest asset is our, our one employee, and therefore, we are considering a cost of living increase for that gentleman.
Thank you. That answered your question? Great. Yes? You?
When we're talking about increases here, uh-
Could you identify yourself?
Are these normally-
Could you identify yourself?
Jean Pierre Cravier, thirty-nine Crookledge Road.
Thank you.
Are these employees, highway department employees, working for, with the highway, working with the Water Department?
We'll find out.
The Water Department currently has one full-time employee. We also supplement our staff with Water Department, excuse me, with Highway Department staff. Our budget includes some wages to take the Highway Department employees as if they were contractors. In theory, we could go out to the street and hire independent contractors, but we choose to keep our forces in-house, and part of our budget does include wages for the highway laborers to assist us with our job.
Okay. Thank you. That answered your question?
It answers a question, but I've got a problem with the town taking, making a statement here that we're freezing wages. We're not going to give any, any of the union employees any increases. Has that been negotiated? Have these wages for these employees that we're talking about been negotiated? And has the, have they agreed to no increases?
Okay. Question heard. We'll have the person behind you answer.
John Martin, one oh-six Clark Street.
You can have a seat, because you've been up to- You can have a seat, because you've been up twice.
I think that's you, John. John Martin, 106 Clark Street. No, the negotiations are going to start this spring into the summer, so we have not negotiated that yet, but that's our intention. The other issue is somebody said the water fund generates its own income, so if they give an increase, that's okay. They generate the income from you people right out there by raising the rates. So that's the issue. You are paying for this, and whether you want it or not, it's up to you. But from my point of view, I don't think we can give some people increases and other people not increases. And the other question is, when the Highway Department folks work for the Water Department, do they get the increased rate for working for the Water Department rather than what they get at the Highway Department? So out of fairness, everybody gets a raise or nobody gets a raise, in my opinion.
Thank you.
To clarify the last point, when the Highway worker works for the Water Department, they get paid whatever wage they're getting paid with the Highway Department. There is no compensation, increase, decrease, or otherwise.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion under Article 13, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Aye.
The motion under Article 13 passes by majority. Mayor, a motion for Article 14, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $20,401 from the Water Pollution Abatement Trust Loan Repayment Account to fund amortization of the WPAT bonds in the Water Department.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this, please?
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmory Meadow Road. We, as a community, decided to loan Water Pollution Abatement Trust money to town taxpayers to upgrade their septic systems. What this does is, any money that we've collected from those funds, we have in a special fund that we need to transfer out in order to pay down the loans that we have.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Seeing any other speakers? Seeing none? We're going to vote. All in favor of the motion under Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 14 passes unanimously. Mayor, a motion for Article 15, please.
Article 15, Transfer Ambulance Related Expenses FY 2019 Budget. I move that the town vote to transfer $100,000 from the ambulance receipts revenue for the appropriation accounts to the Fire EMS Department expense account to fund the ambulance transportation.
Thank you. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Thank you, Vicki.
Vicki Morrow, Town Accountant, Palmory Meadow Road. Back in, I can't remember the exact year, we voted as a community to set up this receipts reserve for appropriations for the ambulance. Any money we receive for any ambulance calls goes into this particular fund. We are able to use this fund to supplement the expenses for the ambulance, and this is transferring it from one fund to the general fund, so we were able to use it for the ambulance service that we have.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Anyone who want to speak, answer, ask questions? None? We're going to vote under 15. All those in favor of the motion under Article 15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 15 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 16, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer $18,877.47 from the PEG Programming Receipts Reserve for Appropriation Account to pay East Hampton Media for audiovisual services per the town's contract.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this? Vicki.
Vicki Morrow, Palmory Meadow Road, Town Accountant. This is the $18,877.47 is the money that we owe the East Hampton Media Cable for the programming and videoing of all our meetings that we've had so far. The Department of Revenue had instructed communities to either set up an enterprise fund or receipts reserve for appropriation fund, special revenue fund, for this particular item. We chose to do a receipts reserve for appropriation, similar to the ambulance, where we take the money from one fund and able to put it in the general fund to pay these bills. And this is the money that we get from the Charter Cable, which is on the back of all of your bills that we negotiated our contract with, and it's just money that, once we get the check, we have to pay East Hampton Media Cable.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition?
Not in opposition. Josh Sterns, 11 Jonathan Judd Circle. And I just wanted to clarify that PEG stands for Public Educational and Government Access Television. And in addition to supporting government transparency and making sure that all people can see our meetings online, East Hampton Media also provides a number of other services that people can take advantage of, that bring real true value at a moment when local media in many places around our country and our communities are withdrawing. So the chance to have access to media-making tools for all people to make their own media, to have a voice in their community, and to ensure the government transparency, I think, is hugely important. And as was said, these funds are by the deals negotiated between towns and cable companies. For the cable companies to have a near monopoly in our town, they have to provide this public service back to us. So I say I am in support of this, but also that folks should take advantage of East Hampton Media in many other ways as well. It's a great resource.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, we're going to vote. The motion under Article 16, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 16 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 17, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $15,000 from the Operational Stabilization Fund to the Assessor's Capital Budget for the replacement of the Assessor's financial software for the Assessor's Department.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please?
Hi, my name is Austin Rogers, Old Harvest Road. I was just wondering if someone could clarify a couple things. What is the name of this software? Have there been quotes done to other software companies to see if that $15,000 could be reduced? That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Two questions? Who would like to answer? Select Board, Vicki? Can always write in, Vicki.
Mr. Moderator, from my understanding during this budget process, when the assessors came up with this, they currently have a vision software which holds all of our evaluations for the community. This is not going to be supported anymore by the current Microsoft software that does this. I think it's about a year or so that we won't be able to use this software. If it crashes, we're kind of done. We have no documentation, nothing. And so the $15,000 is a specific assessor program to replace the program we have now, just so that we can have it be supported in the future.
Thank you. That answered your first question? Did it answer your second question? No. I guess competitive bidding, I think, is on the table for his question.
I guess I would have to find out. This is the current software that we have. There's no competitive building bidding unless it's over $50,000 per procurement rules, but I would have to ask them that question.
That's an answer. Anybody else? Yes?
This would be a proprietary conversion from one version to another of the company we currently use. If we went out and actually changed to another software vendor, not only would we have the cost of the new software, but we'd have additional conversion costs to go to that software, so it would actually be more expensive.
Thank you. Question? Anybody else? We're going to vote on the motion under Article 17. All in favor, please signify by saying aye, and it needs a two-thirds majority. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Mayor, a motion for Article 18, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,500 from the Operational Stabilization Fund to the Town Hall IT Capital Budget for replacement of the IT server in Town Hall.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Thank you.
The server in Town Hall is about at the end of its useful life, but what has come up is, one of the things that we found is the software that the assessors use is not compatible with our Town Hall server. So they were looking at, with the upgrade of actually doing a cloud-based data storage source, which was going to be approximately $6,000 a year. We can replace the Town Hall server, which is going to have to be replaced anywhere, anyway, for approximately $7,500, which we'll get quotes on, but that in itself will also be able to maintain the new assessor's program, so we'll be able to keep that in-house and not incur that extra $6,000 a year. There will be some maintenance costs that go along with the server, but they will not come close, anywhere near the $6,000 to do the cloud base that the vendor was trying to sell to the assessors.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else would like to speak? Questions? We're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion, and we need two-thirds. All those in favor of the motion under Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passes unanimously and meets our two-thirds majority requirement. May I hear a motion for Article 19, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $50,000 from the Operational Stabilization Fund to the Norris School Capital Budget to fund repair of a boiler at the Norris School.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Who would like to speak on this?
Erin Kuchar, 49 Coleman Road, School Committee Chair. We have to fix the second boiler that we have at the school that will not be operational next year if it's not fixed. Luckily, we made it through the heating season, but we need the $50,000 to fix the boiler.
Thank you. Anyone want to speak in opposition? Any questions? Okay, we're going to vote on the motion under Article 19. We need two-thirds. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 19 passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. Mayor, a motion for Article 20, please.
Article 20, I move that the town vote to approve a five-year lease for a new postage meter at the Town Hall for use by all municipal departments.
Motion made. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this, please? Thank you, Ed.
The current postage meter in Town Hall is at the end of its lease. We are in, taking a look. We're going to have to replace it, so we are out looking at vendors, but it'll be another five-year lease. Any lease over three years in term needs to be voted on and approved by town meeting, so this would give the Select Board the authority to enter into a five-year lease for another postage meter.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we're going to vote. All those in favor of the motion, and we need two-thirds. Under Article 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 20 passes unanimously, meeting, also meeting our two-thirds majority requirement. May I have a motion for Article 21, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend Article 42 of the town general bylaws pursuant to the provisions of Section 53 E1 1/2 of Chapter 44 of the Massachusetts General Laws, as most recently amended by inserting a new category to the revolving funds, conservation. Specifying the department receipts to be credited to each fund, the departmental purposes or programs for which each fund may be expended, and the entity authorized to expend each fund, with the new language noted in italics, as per Article 21 of the warrant for the May 1st, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Who would like to speak on this?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to propose a motion. In the lieu of the financial condition this town is in, one of our revenue streams is fees that are paid to the boards and committees out there. So by increasing and adding a new revolving fund, we are basically taking out of our general fund and have not identified where the other $10,000 has come from. So the motion I would like to make is, I move that the town strike the motion on the floor for Article 21 regarding revolving funds as shown in the annual town warrant meeting for FY 19. Reason being, all current and existing funds have been established under the Town of Southampton General Bylaws, Article 42, Section 1, and this article is unnecessary to keep those funds in place, the same funds in place for FY 18 with no increases in net new funds. So basically...
Oh. We need two copies. One for the town clerk. We have a motion, and I'm going to read, we have an amendment to the motion. To move that the town strike the motion on the floor for Article 21 regarding revolving funds as shown in the annual town meeting warrant for fiscal 19. All current existing revolving funds have been established under Town of Southampton General Bylaws, Article 42, Section 1, and this article is unnecessary to keep these funds the same as in fiscal 18 with no increases or net new funds. Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Who would like to address this amendment to the motion at hand?
Dan Pellegrini, 76 Crookledge Road. The reason why I brought the amendment forward again is, it takes away from our general funds, where we need all the money we can get, puts it into a fund that is allowed to be spent at will by the Conservation Commission opposed to coming back to the general populace of the town, in the town determining where we spend those funds. This fund has never been in place for the Conservation Commission, and it's unnecessary, especially in the financial climate that is going on right now.
I got a question. Clarification. Are you removing the entire Article 21, or the addition to?
Removing the entire article because it keeps all existing revolving funds in place.
Okay.
This article only adds a new revolving fund, which is for the Conservation Commission, and will reduce. And I did ask during the select, or the Finance Committee meeting when this was brought to the Finance Committee, show me where the $10,000 is going into the general fund that we're going to take out and put in the revolving fund for the Conservation Commission.
Okay, now we're going to talk about the merits or lack thereof of this amendment. Ed?
I'm going to speak against the amendment. Number one, I'd like to call the moderator's attention to Article 21 is just an amendment to the current bylaw. It's adding conservation, so I believe that trying to remove the entire revolving fund bylaw is out of order, but I won't say that. That being said, just to let you know, conservation currently has no budget. They have no way to pay their bills. This would allow them to pay for their envelopes, their printing cartridge, their stationary, if they have to do any filings in the newspaper that, for notices, what have you. And I will actually read the Department, DOR, standard on revolving funds. A revolving fund separately accounts for specific revenues and earmarks them for expenditure by a board or officer without appropriation for particular purposes to support the activity, program, or service that generated the revenues. Typically, revolving funds are authorized by state law for programs or services with expenses that, one, fluctuate with demand, and, two, can be matched with the fees, charges, or other revenues collected during the year. Basically, conservation, planning boards, ZBA are prime examples of this. You don't know if you're going to have 100 applications or 500 during the year, so it's going up and down. It prevents you from having to budget a cost at a high mark when you might have a low mark. The other piece, the board or officer with authority to spend from a revolving fund can only incur liabilities and spend from the available unspent and... and encumbered balance of actual collections. Even though it's capped at, or would be capped at $10,000, all they can spend is what they take in. It might be $2,000, $3,000, or $4,000. So it's not automatically $10,000 being taken from the general fund.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next.
Maureen Groden, Cheryl Lane. Ed just said everything that I was going to say. I just want to say I support this for the same reason that every other committee here who has fees and bills to pay have a revolving fund also.
Thank you.
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. The DOR guidance for revolving funds, much to what Ed already elaborated on, is if you cannot use those revenue sources in your tax rate, they should go into a revolving fund for those specific departments. The Conservation Commission, the ZBA, the Planning Board, is one of those particular funds. The Department of Revenue does not, they don't allow you to use miscellaneous reoccurring funds when you set your tax rate to balance your budget. And this would fall into that category.
Thank you.
I just want to highlight one thing. They have not been budgeted for three years. So there has not been a budget line item. So they obviously have not had expenses and had ways of paying those expenses. The other comment I'd like to make is whenever they do have to post anything in the newspaper, it is the responsibility of the applicant to pay those fees, as well as any peer studies and reviews. So at the end of the day, this is a net increase into the town. It's a decrease of our general funds and an increase for them to spend it at the Conservation Commission. So it hasn't been funded in three years, and I don't understand why we're going to fund it now when we're asking for an override.
Thank you.
We're talking about an amendment to a, to a article that we're already talking about.
Yes.
Now, when that amendment is going to wipe out the article, I think that's out of order. I think it's taken away our opportunity to vote on the article as we understand the article.
Actually...
We've heard the arguments for voting against it. We should get a chance to vote against it. I think we should turn down the amendment, then vote on the article. And I call for the question.
You can't, because the moderator was very clear that you can't state your comments, then call for the question. This moderator bends over backwards to allow you to speak. Even if there is a questionable amendment, it's up to you, rather than simply ruling it off with the gavel. The moderator accepted the amendment. I take the challenge. I stand by my ruling. Next, please.
I'm going to address the amendment to the amendment. To me, when I read Article 21, it's talking about giving the Conservation Commission the same rights in the town that all the other, all of the other commissions have here, to take the fees they collect and use them. And to me, that's a reasonable amendment. An amendment to wipe out everything else the town is doing and put all the money back in. That's a lot of changes to our town. And I would suggest that this newly added amendment fail. I don't support it.
Thank you. Charlie Knickie, you were next.
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. Those revolving funds, by statute, have to be revolving funds. They cannot go into the general fund. They have to be, by statute, per the Department of Revenue laws, which I have to uphold, and I cannot let those go into the general fund. And I, and I, as the accountant, review everything that comes through my office. And so they're not getting $10,000 to spend. Whatever they collect, they'll be able to spend. Currently, they are paying for their bills from Wetlands Protection Fund, which is, is a special fund for wetlands protection. Some of those expenses, if you buy envelopes, don't know if all of it goes to wetland protection, but it gets charged there. Some of it shouldn't be that way. And so we're trying to correct that issue with the conservation.
Thank you.
Heather Pellegrini, 76 Crooked Ledge Road. I just want to clarify for everyone that the proposed motion to, to table this article or to strike the article does not affect any other fund of revolving funds. The revolving funds, other than Conservation, which is net new, were established at last year's Annual Town Meeting and the general bylaws of the town. The motion put forth by Dan Pellegrini does not impact any other revolving fund except for it stops the creation of a net new revolving fund. And the Board of Health is also a, a board in town that collects fees. They do not have a revolving fund. So that argument is not 100% either.
Charlie.
MJ Smith, Palmeri Meadow Road. I had one question about all this, which was, does the Conservation Committee make money or lose money? If they lose money, then I'd see the concern about sucking money out of the general fund. If they make money, why can't they have a revolving, whatever it's called?
Who wants to answer that question? I know the answer, but I'm going to be neutral. Thank you, MJ Smith. Well, Charlie, I can't say they don't lose money. Somebody needs to answer that.
Sure. Are we talking now about Article 21?
We're, we're answering the question. We're answering the question about, does the Conservation Commission make money or lose money?
I can answer that question. They bring, they bring money in, and the reason they haven't needed operating funds is these are citizens who are volunteering for us, volunteering their hours at night and on weekends to go walk property. And they're taking money out of their own pockets sometimes. You know, they have to put signs and post the trails and things for safety for people who are recreating here on the conservation lands we have. And it's deplorable that it's the one commission that doesn't get the benefit of all of the filing fees and things that they bring in. So right now, they're self-funding.
Arthur Lawrence, 113 Crooked Ledge Road. I happen to be, unfortunately, the treasurer of the Conservation Commission. Now, I want to know, and I'll look to Mr. Pellegrini, how am I going to pay my bills?
Please don't name anybody.
Well, he made...
Do not name anybody. You can say your previous speaker.
My apologies, previous speaker. I'd like to know how I'm going to pay my bills, that's all. We make, we, we bring in money, we bring in, we're not a deficit operation. We have our local filing fees that we collect. The previous speaker is correct. When somebody needs a, a, a public hearing, the advertisement in the paper is paid for by the individual. But how do I take that money? And where do I put it? And how do I pay that bill? I guess that's what I'm saying here. I don't know. With the new, with the new rules, not being able to use the Wetland Protection Account, I have no way of doing it. And I'll be damned if I'm going to go up to North Hampton at the Gazette office and say, here's your check, and take care of it. So unless somebody can come up and tell me how I'm going to do it...
Are you asking a specific question or a rhetorical question?
Both, Robert, how's that?
Not good.
Okay.
All right, we're going to, we're going to wrap this up with you three.
Sharon Powell, Riverdale Road. So I've worked in municipal government for way too long. So when, and I'm familiar with revolving funds and how revenue works. And under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, and I'm on Mass Gov right now, all revenue received or collected from any source and by any department belongs to a common pool referred to as the general fund. So my understanding is, like, in working with different towns, I mean, different cities throughout the Commonwealth, it takes an act of God for me to ask the comptroller to set up a revolving fund. And so I was really kind of taken aback, because I know that revenue that is received goes to the general fund. And the answer to your question is how you would pay for that is subject through, subject to appropriation through the budget process. So if he needs money for toner, paper, advertising, you put that in the budget. And then the revenue goes to the revenue, the general fund. So it's, it's general law.
We're, we're, there's two of you there, and then we're done. We're going to vote.
I move the question.
Okay, all in favor of voting for the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. We're going to vote on the amendment. Only the amendment that was read. Amendment is, move that the town strike the motion on the floor for Article 21, re-revolving funds, as shown in the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for Fiscal 19. All current existing revolving funds have been established under the Town of Southampton General Bylaws, Article 42, Section 1. And this article is unnecessary to keep these funds the same in, in Fiscal 18 with no increase or net new funds. All in favor of this amendment, signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The amendment fails. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion under Article 21 passes by majority. May I hear a motion for Article 22, please?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to set the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund to be established according to Article 24 of the May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? Sure.
We're on Article 22, and it says, refers to Article 24 in the motion.
Ooh. Okay, let's, let's revise. Article 24, so to be established according to 24. Ed? We can, we can revise the motion if necessary. Yeah, let's do that. The concept is, it's still on the umbrella of the article, and if there's, there is wiggle room, as long as the motion, and you corrected generally in the first motion on the floor.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to set the limitation on expenditures for each revolving fund to be established according to Article 22 of the May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second?
Second.
Who would, motion made and seconded, who would like to address this, please? Good catch.
This article will establish the spending limits on the revolving funds for fiscal year 19. All other funds, other than Conservation, which is a new fund, which would be established at $10,000, and the Zoning Board of Appeals, which was three, but is now, we're now asking to, to be, spending limit of $5,000. All the other funds remain the same as their, their spending limits were in fiscal year 18.
Thank you. Anybody in opposition? Anybody else? Okay.
Heather Pellegrini, 76 Crooked Ledge Road. I'm just wondering why the ZBA net increase of $2,000 is required for 19?
Okay. Is there a question on the floor? Vicki?
Vicki Morrow, Palmeri Meadow Road, Town Accountant. It's just an increase in their allowing spending limit of $5,000. They're currently at their $3,000 limit right now, with more, you know, potentially advertising costs that go up every year with the Daily Hampshire Gazette, filings that they have to do. This just allows them to spend more than the $3,000 that was in, for this year.
Thank you. Answer your question?
Currently, there's $3,000 that they can spend. Next year, we want to increase it to five. But they obviously have to collect that $5,000 in order to spend it for increased costs that they may incur in next year's budget.
Thank you.
I guess I'm just questioning the rationale. Why, again, in a year that we are having such dire fiscal problems, would we be potentially taking away, maybe it's only $2,000, but to me, you know, the rationale for Gazette advertising, again, anytime an applicant goes to ZBA, they pay for those advertising fees, correct?
Oh, go, go to Mike.
If we collect more money for advertising fees and more projects, we need to be able to let them spend that money to pay for those projects. And that's what that money is doing. It's just increasing them to be able to spend that money if they have to.
Thank you. Anybody else? Questions? Comments? We're going to vote. Motion on Article 22, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 22 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 23 from our CPC Chair, Virginia A. Hart? That is our custom, as we tradition announced earlier.
I'll tear this thing apart.
Sandy, want to help?
Virginia A. Hart, 27 Former Road, Chair of the Community Preservation. Article 23 is the report to see if the town will vote to hear and act pursuant to Massachusetts General Law 44B on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2019, community preservation budget, and to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund the following sums of money, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, for Committee Administrative Expenses, Community Preservation Projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, with each item to be considered as a separate appropriation. The first is our administrative expenses. We've usually not had that in the report. It's usually been a separate article. And then this is also always been in our report, is the amount of the funds that have to be reserved in the three areas that we can spend money in. And from the estimated revenues for historical resources reserve, $27,000; for the estimated revenues for community housing reserve, $27,000; and for the estimated revenues for open space, $27,000.
You want to read the motion?
Where is it? Move that the town vote to hear and act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee for fiscal year 2018, and to allocate sums of money from community preservation as presented in Article 23 of the warrant of May 1, 2018 Annual Town Meeting.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion, motion made, or a second, second? Motion made and seconded, would you like to address that a little bit more? That's it? You're good? Anybody want to speak in opposition? Questions? Behind you.
Pam on 110th Street. Administrative expenses, could you please explain?
These are the funds that we have always, we are allowed to take. We're allowed to take up to 10% of the revenues that come in. Keeping in mind, that's not only the surcharge on our taxes here, but it's on the matching grant from the state. We never have taken the 10%, and this year, looking at our past record, we dropped it even more to $7,500.
Thank you. Answer your question? No? No, please step to the mic.
Explain the administrative expenses. Do we have an employee, or what?
No. We do have the opportunity for our committee to attend workshops once in a while on different aspects of community preservation. I know the person from the Housing Authority has gone regularly to some of the housing, affordable housing meetings. We do have to advertise in the Gazette, too. But other than that, our expenses are... But other than that, our expenses are quite low.
Thank you. Answer your question?
Yeah.
Great, good. Anybody else? We're going to vote? Oops. Must have pressed the wrong button, I heard a voice. We're going to vote on the motion for Article 23, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion on Article 23 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion, please, for Article 24?
Move that the town vote to transfer $10,000 from Community Preservation Fund to the Southampton Historical Commission to provide for the restoration and cleaning of Revolutionary War and Civil War graves, grave sites and stones. Said funds to be transferred from the Community Preservation Surcharges Historical Preservation Account.
Motion made, do I hear a second? Motion made and seconded, would you like to address this? Who would like to address this?
I'll let Bob Cozab speak to this.
Bob Cozab, 181 College Highway. The last town meeting, we had a warrant for this purpose, which was worded contingent upon getting state funds which we had applied for in an equal amount. That state funding did not come through, and so what we're suggesting here is that we take that like amount without the state funds and do half the project.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition? Any comments? Questions? We're going to vote on the motion under Article 24. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion for Article 24 passes unanimously. May I hear a motion for Article 25, please?
Move that the town vote to transfer 675,000 from Community Preservation Fund, undesignated account, to the Southampton Park Commission to fund phases two through four for the Labrie Field improvements.
Thank you. Motion made or here a second? Motion made and seconded, who would like to speak on this, please?
Someone from the park, or SYAA, or whoever.
All of us. Just wants to 100 Glendale Road, stepping in from Mark Reed, who is our chair. And so I'm representing the Park Commission. Just to give a little history, this was actually started when my son was 15, and he's 25 now. So we started with a recreational needs committee formed in 2007. We formed then the Labrie Field Design Committee in 2009. We did the first phase, which you see today out in Labrie Field between 2012 and 2014. So today, 2018, it's time to finish the project. So the original cost was about 1.4 million dollars that we were all aware of, and we still have our design, original design we paid for over 10 years ago. So this is basically to complete the project that we began many years ago.
Thank you. Anybody want to speak in opposition?
Bob Cozab, 181 College Highway. I'm the Historical Commission representative on the CPC committee. I'm opposed to this expenditure for a few reasons, one of which is the magnitude. I don't have the exact current figures, but when this was presented to CPC, the presentation included numbers like a field house, 270,000 dollars, sewage disposal, 100,000 dollars, power, 100,000 dollars, et cetera, et cetera. This, this is, this magnitude is extravagant, in my opinion. A significant amount of money has already been put into Labrie Field. We're a town of 6,000, 6,200 people, and we're acting as though we're, some towns of 25,000 don't have these kinds of facilities. The other concern I have is the drainage.
I need the rest of you to remain quiet so he can concentrate on what he's saying for them.
The rest, another concern I have is the drainage on the undesignated amount of money in this account. You, as you probably know, 10% goes to each of the three categories, open space, historic preservation, community housing, with 5% going to administrative expenses. The other 65% can be allocated to any project within the three. In this case, we're talking about open space. This expenditure will drain a significant portion of that undesignated account. One of the reasons I'm concerned about that drain is that my anticipation for future funding, near-term future funding for CPC will be diminished, mainly because the state legislature has recently denied a increase in the fees for their portion of the contribution to these CPC funds. In addition to that, there have been several cities that have come on, one of which is Springfield, that had come on to this program, so the pool of money coming from the state will be spread thinner. So those are the reasons why I oppose this.
Thank you. Who's next?
Mr. Moderator, Charlie Kinecki, Valley Road. I was the prior member of the Labrie Field Committee that actually did the design and everything else some 10, 12 years ago out there. I am also on the CPA Board and a voting member representing the Select Board, and sat in on these presentations for this funding. I've also been watching the evolution of other projects in the town of Southampton. One of the things that always draws me back is how Southampton has so many false starts on projects. This project has been going on for 10-plus years. It needs to have some closure. I understand it's a lot of money, but I also believe that once this is done, it shall be done, and it's necessary at this point in time for the town to move forward with this. This not only provides benefit in the fact that it's a open space, but it provides a resource for our students and our mature people in town for having activities. We presently don't have a lot of activities relative to the outside in our community. I'm strongly in favor of passing this article.
Thank you. Next.
Mike Buehler, 88. Hi, I am not here to take a position, I just have three questions of fact.
Sure.
First question is, can somebody provide information about how heavily used the fields currently are? That is, how many of our kids here in Southampton are using those fields and how frequently? The second question is, are there any projections about ongoing maintenance and upkeep costs that might be imposed by these improvements? And the third question, I suppose, is for the Concom, excuse me, for the CPC, is, are there other projects on the horizon that could be affected in some way by this commitment?
Who wants to answer the first one? Usage?
So I can't give. Steve Capshaw, 3 Kevin Drive, I'm an SYA board member. We have hundreds and hundreds of soccer players on SYA that use it, or used it to some extent in the past, but use it less now because the fields are unplayable. We have hundreds of Hampshire United board members, I see Sunya's here. How many would you say there are? Who are also not using the field and moving elsewhere because it is unplayable. We have 200 kids in Little League in town, many of which are on our seniors team, who are looking to play their games, we're looking to move some to East Hampton because the field is unplayable. We have many teams from out of town that come to look at it and would pay user fees, but look at the field and then go elsewhere because it's unplayable. What was the second question?
To answer your question for the usage?
Yeah, I could talk to-
No, I'm pointing to-
I could speak to maintenance for a second.
The second question is maintenance.
So maintenance. As part of this, and I'll speak to it in a moment, if this is invested in, SYA and Hampshire United have committed to giving $10,000 a year for the maintenance for the field, which is paying for all the water and the fertilization plan. All the town would have to do is continue to mow as they do now.
And for the third part of the question, Virginia?
That's paid for by SYA parents' user fees who are playing the sport.
Thank you. Thank you. Virginia Ahart. And the question was, what's on the horizon?
Nothing. I mean, this is one reason. The only way community preservation gets involved is when a group brings us, the committee, a project. They're not thought up by any member in the committee unless they're like Mr. Cozab, representing one of the five committees on it. Conservation could bring a project, but as far as right now, we have had, other than the one for the cemetery, this is the only project we've had all year to work on, and no one, at this point, has indicated an interest in another project.
Thank you. The answer your question? Who would like to speak that hasn't spoken?
John Shan, Palmroy Meadow Road. I must admit, I have a lot of mixed feelings about this. Having coached for many years with all the sports in town, back in the time when the coaches had to go down to the fields with shovels and rakes to fix up the fields that we played on, to see, 675,000 dollars going into one field just blows me out of my seat. But I know the Finance Committee has gone over this, along with all the other things, and I'd like to call, see, the Finance Committee is not recommending it, and I'd like to ask the Finance Committee to please come up and explain your reasoning.
Step ahead from the end of the line.
Michael Rosenberg, 144 East Street, Finance Committee Chair. So the Finance Committee did vote to not recommend this. This was not a unanimous vote, this was a difficult conversation. I think the reason for it not being recommended is when you consider everything that is going on in town in light of the fiscal situations, the cuts, the potential cuts, all those things. I thought it would, I think the voting members thought it'd be prudent to pull back on the spending. I'm going to take this opportunity, since I was in line, on a personal standpoint, I think this is a good project. It's shovel-ready, plans are ready, construction estimates are here. It is a benefit for multi-generations. Like Virginia said, there isn't a list of projects behind it ready to go. So if we have funding available to do something, to improve something, to utilize those funds for what they're for, then I am all for it.
Thank you. Those who haven't spoken before are next, all of them.
M.J. Smith on Palmroy Meadow Road. Is 675,000, is that a lot? This is a question. Is that a lot of money or a little money? Would that drain the CPC funds? And if it drained it, would it ever get recharged? I just have no sense of the magnitude.
Question heard, and Virginia here, Ahart will answer it for you, for us all.
Well, the current figures, and I know we're going to get an updated one before too long, because monies are coming in. It would leave in the lines, let me see, it would still leave over 200,000 in undesigned, 93,000 in open space, and that includes recreation, but open space. And historical restoration, I'm not really sure where we're at right now. 30? 30? 32,000. And this is maybe a plea to the rest of you. Affordable housing has over 300,000 dollars. If anyone's got a good project, please see the Housing Authority.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next? Maureen Groden hasn't spoken yet, you have.
Austin Rogers, Old Harvest Road. My property actually directly abuts Labrie Field, so my support for this motion is pretty selfish, in the fact that I think it will be good for my property value. I would love a short commute to the fields when my kids are old enough to play. Also, the project includes bathrooms, and my sister-in-law, since there are no bathrooms on the field, has promised that all of my nephew and niece's friends could come over and use our bathroom during games, so I'd like that not to happen. But also, I'm originally from the Boston area, I'm used to being in thickly settled residential areas. I lived in the city for almost a decade, so I'm used to seeing people out. It's part of the reason why I initially didn't want to consider Southampton as a place to establish home, because it seems like people go to work, go to Big Y, and then go home. And so it's nice to look out my windows and see the town living life and enjoying each other and enjoying sports and competing and winning against other towns and teams, so I'd like to see more of that.
Thank you.
Maureen Groden, Southampton, Sherolane. So Southampton was an early voter to join the Community Preservation Fund, so we've enjoyed getting a match from the state. Like Mr. Cozab said, now big cities are involved in the program, and the state match is actually falling back. And so there will be a draining of the Community Preservation Funds going forward. We want to enjoy the match that we got in the past. And initially, this project include batting cages, flagpole, playground on the site, a lot of things that was scaled back, and it's still a pretty high price tag. There will be maintenance costs, there will, I know that there's a commitment from the two places to put money towards maintenance, but I don't know if that includes maintenance to the bathrooms and emptying out and pumping the toilets and all that sort of thing. Even though there are no programs right now on the Community Preservation docket besides this, 175 people came to the open space meeting expressing an interest in keeping open space. We currently have a first right of refusal on property on Glendale Road that we have 120 days to decide whether or not we want to do something with. So I'm just wondering if the people that are involved in this project, this says water, irrigation, I wish someone would be able to speak to what happened to the topsoil on the property, but nonetheless, this says 150,000 dollars for irrigation, and then a field house for 270. Is there any ability at this point in time to not fund all of the projects here and do this in maybe a couple more stages instead of just one 600-something thousand dollar stage?
Okay, who would like to answer that question?
Sure, I'll try. My name is Tom Hogan, 6 Madeleine Way, Southampton, Mass. My firm, Doucette and Associates, was originally involved with the original committee and developed documents and was involved in overseeing the contractor on behalf of the town. In terms of topsoil, I don't think topsoil is the problem at the site. I think a variety of issues that have been identified, including heavy wear and tear, lack of irrigation, some grub damage, those sorts of things, things that probably would be addressable in a maintenance program. So, and that's part of, I think, what SYAA is committing to do. CPA, one of the driving factors when instructions are given to communities is to try and foster those private-public relationships just like this. This is an example of something that you want to see, you want to have people step up and take care of. When we were approached to help SYAA and the leadership finish the project, we were asked to look at the project as it was originally contemplated and approved by the Labrie Ball Field Committee, which was approved in part of the town's master plan. So that's the project that we took, we looked at, we priced out to the best that we can at this stage, that we negotiated with the CPC committee, that we went before the Select Board with, and the project that we have here tonight. And it is true, much of the project that was originally designed and contemplated was pulled back to be sensitive to the budgetary issues that we were made aware of. Things include, like you said, pulling back the extent of the irrigation system, trading off some of- off some of the ornamental features of the promenade around the fieldhouse, you know, switching that from concrete to pavement. Those are examples of how we took something that would have been a preference, and tried to work already, scaling it down. So that was the charge that we had, and that we think we met, to the approval of your CPC Committee. I hope I answered your questions.
Thank you. The question is, can we have water? You have a microphone, please use it.
My question was, are you able to break this down into more stages, or is it all or none here? That's my question. Just because of the level of interest in other projects right now, even though there's nothing in writing in front of Community Preservation.
I definitely cannot answer that this is an all-or-none project, that's for sure. That's the project we looked at, you know, how many phases do you break it up into? I don't know the answer to that. I do know what the original project involved, that was approved 10 years ago and finished construction in '12. And I know the difference between what was constructed and what was envisioned at that time. And in essence, the difference is what is being proposed today, for what roughly, I think, is going to be substantially close to the budget numbers that were contemplated at that time.
We're going to allow one motion. I'm sorry, we're going to allow one pro and one con.
Am I good?
You're good. One pro and one con, then we're going to vote. Who hasn't spoken before? Pro, con?
I have questions.
You got questions? Go ahead.
Nick Bojole, 25 Strong Road. Mr. Moderator, I have two questions. One is, would not releasing these funds impact any matching grants or other funding sources that were originally part of the proposals? And two, is there any part of the funds that we're releasing designated to returning these fields to playable condition? And if not, are there plans to restore the fields to playing condition?
Okay, so matching grants and playing conditions on the field? Who would like to answer that? Virginia Ahart?
I'll answer the first one.
She will answer the first one, stay tuned.
No. When we originally worked on purchasing it, we had a land grant, but there are no grants out there now.
Answer your question for the first question. Who would like to talk about the playing conditions of the field to answer that question? Yep.
The playing conditions are horrific. I mean, if you walk out there with any round ball and kick it, it will not go straight. It will go left or it will go right. A baseball will go left or right. There's either no grass, or large clumps of glass that looks something like the frozen tundra. I'm sorry, I think I'm supposed to be addressing the moderator.
That's good.
It is unplayable. People are fleeing the field. Hampshire United, which is mostly Southampton kids, moved all their playing away from Labrie Fields last year. There are, and to go back to what it is, it's not one field, it's six fields. When it's full, it's a magical place. When it was first built and the grass was good, you know, before, you know, there was no irrigation, and it all died, and it became clumpy, there were a lot of people there, and it was really exciting. But right now, the conditions are horrific. We play there at times because we have to, because we don't have other space, but I think you'd be stunned at what fees you would be able to collect at that facility if you complete the project, that the town, as taxpayers, already invested in with $30-plus thousand.
Thank you. That answer your question?
I'm sorry, no. Recognizing that the playing, restoring the fields to playing condition would bring in additional interest, I just am asking to ensure that restoring the fields to playing condition are part of the $600,000, or is it not part of the $600,000?
It is.
Okay, great. Answer your question.
Vicki Morrow, Palmeroy Meadow Road. I just want to clarify some other numbers for the CPC Undesignated Fund. Currently, this fiscal year, we've collected $161,419,000 that are not appropriated currently into the CPC Fund. So if we were to do what we've collected so far, and take the $675,000 away, there'll be $387,854 left in undesignated, and we still would need to collect this last tax bill, and we could move those funds into that account.
Thank you. We're going to vote. We're going, I called it three minutes ago, I said I want a pro and con, we had some questions, so we're going to vote. Is that okay? You have a question? You're going to speak for or against? We're here, we, you got something different to say? Please say it.
She just made a statement, right? Not a pro or against, anyway. I'm just, I just have a question.
Closer, introduce yourself.
Okay. Gail Santoro, I live on Pleasant Street. I have a question. Can we restore the fields to playing certainty, to some good condition, without spending $675,000? It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money. Do we need bathrooms? Do we need a shed? Do we need all of those things to restore the fields to playing, safe playing conditions? What would that cost? That's my question.
Thank you. Somebody have a delta for the fields alone?
Hi, Tom Hogan, 6 Madeline Way. The question, I think the question goes to which portions of the project have been prioritized, and so we talk about bringing, you know, do you bring the fields to playing conditions, but not put the irrigation in at this time? So I would think that if we've cited irrigation as a potential source of, you know, the condition of the grass, I would say no. So those go hand in hand. If we talk about the importance of, you know, the restroom facilities, and the public health issues, and having water, and, you know, water service, and bubblers, and electronics for, you know, services that those need, I would say that we want those too. Those are all part of the discussions that were part of the proposal.
Thank you.
I do have some figures. Incidentally, I was the only person that opposed this on CPC. The figures that were presented in February of this year separated out the various components of this. $270,000 for a new building, can build a house for that. $100,000 for sewage disposal system. $100,000 for power from Strong Road. There is a separate, here it is, a new irrigation system, which I presume would help in improving the playing conditions, $65,000. Those were the figures presented to us by the landscape architect, Cannon.
Thank you.
Sure, and these are, these are elements that are, you know, we could talk about the fieldhouse. This is substantially the fieldhouse that was part of the original project. We were asked to, you know, amend this, add an overhang here, but there's really no substantial changes to it, except that we've value engineered the fieldhouse, instead of what was once a precast structure. We're looking to stick-build that. The septic system, nothing fancy there, we just, you know, we need it, that's required. Electrical, electric service to the building, we need to be able to have the capability of making, you know, emergency phone calls, or, you know, lights for security, and those kind of things. So those are all part, were part of the original project, and that simply have been brought back into this phase.
Okay. I'd like us to vote. Do we have anything new to add? Go ahead.
I move the question.
All right, well, I will, I'll call that out of order. We ought to vote. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Teamwork. Let's try this. All those in favor of the motion under Article 25, please signify by raising your cards. Okay, put them down, please. Opposed, please raise your cards. We're going to have a count. Counters, please. Nothing yet. We're going to get the counters in position. They're going to work from the front to the back. All those in favor of the motion under Article 25, please signify by raising your cards,
Forty.
Seventy-two.
That's it. 112 to 39. It passes by majority. Now, it's 10 o'clock, and I need your permission to continue. All those in favor of continuing the meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. Unanimous, we're going to continue. Motion for Article 26, please. Please be quiet as you leave.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Woodmar Lane as a public way, as shown on a plan entitled Woodmar Estates Prepared for the Southampton Planning Board, and recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, Plan Book 236, pages 76 through 79.
Motion, I need everyone in the back to be quiet, please, on your way out, please, 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 safe, safe home. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Who would like to address the motion under Article 26, please? Nobody. Okay, we're going to vote on the motion under Article 26. All in favor? Hold it, we're not ready. We got, just come right up.
I was moving as fast as I could. I'm Gail Santoro, 83 Pleasant Street. I'd like to speak in opposition to adopting something as a public way. This town already doesn't have the money to maintain the roads it has. Has anybody driven on some of them? And we don't have the money to clear them. Our highway department is really hard-pressed to take snow off of things. We let people come in and build these private lanes, so that they can develop an area, and then they ask the citizens here to do the snow plowing, and care for the road that comes into their driveway. I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Who would like to speak next?
Patrick Mano, 125 Pleasant Street. I believe the Select Board can even answer this one, that is, whether the highway superintendent has approved it already.
Has the highway superintendent approved it?
Thank you.
Yes, he has.
That answer your question. Great. Next?
I would just like to articulate my support for accepting new subdivision roadways as public ways. Every mile of new road brings in additional Chapter 90 funds annually. In addition, particularly in Woodmar Lane, those houses are high property values, and they bring in significant annual revenue in the form of residential tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Doug Blanchard, 99 Crooked Edge Road. I feel when a developer develops property, he puts in a road, he should maintain it and keep it. I don't want to pay my taxes, and you don't want to pay yours, to do this.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're going to vote on the motion under Article 26. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I called it wrong in my first annual meeting, and I was challenged, and I'm now going to be challenged again. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your cards.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Seventeen.
Seventeen. Okay, put your cards down, thanks. All those opposed, please signify by raising your cards.
Sixteen.
Twenty-two.
It passes by majority, 43 to 38. May here a motion for Article 27, please.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board, acting through the Water Commission, to acquire by gift purchase, eminent domain, or otherwise, an easement interest for the purpose of the construction, operation, and maintenance of a pumping station and related facilities and appurtenances in East Hampton, in, upon, and across property, being East Hampton Tax Map 164, Lot 11, described in a deed, recorded with Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, in Book 2284, Page 250, or in, upon and across property, being East Hampton Town Map 164, Lot 12, described in a deed, recorded with the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds, in Book 2414, Page 230, including easements for access and installation of utilities upon said properties to the pumping station, all as shown on the sketch plan, on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire said easement interest on such terms and conditions as the Select Board deems appropriate, and further to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes, or form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, which are within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition, and to authorize the Select Board to approve such amendments.
Thank you. Motion made, who are here, a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, who would like to address this now, please?
Matt Christie, Middle Road, Water Commission Chairman. This article may sound familiar to those that are frequent visitors to town meeting, but the important part of this article is the last part. We need to petition the General Court, the state legislature, to allow us to acquire an easement in the city of East Hampton. The legislation does not specifically cover pump stations for land to be acquired in adjacent cities or towns. It does allow a town to acquire land in an adjacent city or town if it's for a water source, but Town Council thought that the language was a little gray, and suggested that we request special legislation that makes it crystal clear that we're allowed to acquire land in East Hampton. That's the essence of the article.
Thank you. Anyone in opposition? Any questions? We're going to vote. This requires two-thirds majority. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please signify by saying nay. The article passes unanimously, meeting our two-thirds majority, and this concludes our business for the night. I will entertain a motion now to dissolve our Annual Town Meeting. Second, all in favor? Opposed? I now announce the Annual Town Meeting dissolved. Thank you, you've been a lovely audience. I thank Ms. Janine Domino, elected town clerk. I thank Ms. Janine Domino, elected town clerk, Carl Keener, elected deputy, all our counters, everyone, and Ryan Arnold, East Hampton media. Thank you. Safe home.